Hard for being on time. But I will call to order this meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission. And let's begin with a roll call, Jackie.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Chairperson Story? Here. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I did want to take this opportunity to announce that the meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It's being recorded and will be replayed on the next Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed on the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. And tonight, our technician is Lynn Dutton. And now we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do commissioners wish to request any, any from staff?
There has been a request to continue item 4C to the October 4th meeting. The applicant is working with the Coastal Commission to make sure that their development does not qualify as new construction.
With that, well, I'll entertain a motion to continue that item, but I do want to disclose that I am recused because that is in my geographical circle of conflict.
Do we want to do that as part of the consent calendar?
To continue it, or?
I think so. I think it would be best to do that when we get to the consent calendar.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you. So at this time, we'll go to public comments of the members of the public that would like to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to commission comments. Are there any? Seeing none. Staff comments?
No comments.
No comments. Okay. It's a quiet evening. We'll have then the approval of the minutes of the planning commission regular meeting of July the 19th, 2018, and the regular meeting of August 2nd of 2018. And maybe we can handle those in one motion if that's possible. But are there any requested changes?
No, I just need to not vote on the August 2nd minutes because I was absent on that one.
And why don't, I'll split those up then. And then, yeah, let's, we'll then just focus on item 3A. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
And there is a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, Jackie. So then on to item 3B. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll recuse myself on that one.
So next then, we'll go on to the consent calendar. These are matters that will be handled with one vote unless anyone wishes to pull a consent item. Do commissioners wish to pull a consent agenda item?
I don't wish to pull an item, but I do wish to point out an error on the item number B, 4775 Garnet, on the cover sheet of the site plan. The site is mismarked.
I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be Garnet, not Emerald.
I'm pretty sure. Leslie moved it.
Because that would make a difference whether or not I can vote on it, I think.
Yeah, we can make sure that's updated when it comes in for building plans.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with continuing item C, the 106 Sacramento, to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Actually, if I could, I would like to maybe handle A and B and have C as a separate vote since I must recuse myself.
Okay. I'll change my motion to recommend approving A and B on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second on A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Then is there a motion on item, to continue item C?
I'll make that motion as well.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will recuse myself, as I've said now for the third time. So the motion passes. So now let's move on to public hearings. The first is 210 Central Avenue. Can we have a staff report, please?
210 Central, the applicant requested a continuation also because they're, they need additional time to put the story poles up. We'll be sending out an email. We've asked them to place them one week in advance. And once we know the, the timing of when the story poles will go up, we'll be letting you know. So they'd like that continued to the, two meetings out to November 1st, 2018, due to the logistics of booking story pole companies.
Are the, any members of the public that would like to address the commission on that item? You're the only one, so that's. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action. And I do want to disclose to the commissioners that Katie and I met with the applicant on August, Friday, August 31st, just to discuss the story poles and give them some guidance. And they did, you know, they made a comment about not being able to find the actual procedures online, which we may want to book that for, you know, future discussion about having, you know, established and discreet procedures for future applicants. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this item.
I would so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to item 6B, which is 609 Capitola Avenue. This is the design permit and conditional use permit for, in addition to a historic single-family home with, well, previously with a variance, but I understand that that's been withdrawn. And so, well, why don't we just get into the staff report on this item?
Thank you, Chairman Story. I just want to point out, first of all, that the numbers that I'm going to be using in the presentation today were based on the final plans that were submitted yesterday. So in case you hear a floor area that doesn't sound like what was in the staff report, that's because it changed slightly with the plan changes. So 609 Capitola Avenue. The applicant is proposing a 774 square foot addition for an existing single-family historic residence in the R1 zoning district. The application with the modified plan submitted on September 5th requires only a design permit and a conditional use permit, and the variance is no longer required, as you mentioned. The existing residence is, as I mentioned, historic, one-story, single-family home. The defining characteristics include the H-shaped plan footprint with its many narrow gables. You'll see the H a lot more clearly on the existing floor plan. The north and south side gables and eaves and trim, the front and south side focal windows, and the front door with the distinctive oval viewing window. The structure also has a wide horizontal, has wide horizontal siding under the north and south side gables, shingle siding under the front entrance gable, narrow horizontal siding from the top plate to just below the windows, and board and batten siding below. There's also a front deck extending to the southeast corner of the building that is covered by a trellis. And an existing non-conforming detached garage is located at the northwest corner of the site. The garage was relocated from what is now 612 Oak Drive, the lot behind this, when the lot was subdivided. And the location, which does not meet the setback requirements, was approved with a variance under permit 00-54 in 2000. This is the existing floor plan. You can clearly see the, the H shape referred to in the historic review. The attached garage would require a second driveway with a new approach, shown in green, which would result in the loss of one street parking space. The existing driveway on the right-hand side, shown in purple, includes enough spaces to satisfy the parking requirements, so the second driveway is not required by the code for this project. The property is located in the coastal zone, approximately half a mile from the beach and 400 feet from the Capitol Avenue, Bay Avenue intersection, in an area with a high number of commercial establishments. This is the proposed floor plan with the modified garage that was on the plans yesterday that meets the required rear yard setback. The proposed project includes a significant alteration to this historic structure. Significant alterations to historic structures require approval of a conditional use permit by the planning commission, so that's why that's included with the project. The historic architect reviewed the application for compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards and made findings that the design complied with most of the standards, but a few elements did not fully comply. The review included five recommended revisions that would make the project fully comply. The project, the revisions and added conditions will be in compliance with four out of the five recommendations. The only item not addressed is item 5, which involves the roof slope on the new addition because there was some disagreement between the designer and the architectural historian regarding the appropriate slope of the roof on the new addition. So these are the existing elevations. A commissioner emailed me earlier today about whether the inconsistencies called out in the historic memo were cleaned up, and they were. So now the existing and the proposed that I'll be showing you here match. So that was important on the window detailing that you see on the, the east elevation and the south elevation on the focal windows. So these are the proposed elevations, and this has the modified garage size. So the, if you look at the south elevation on the left-hand side, that's, it has the shortened garage. And then on the bottom there, I did a call out for the shortened eaves. They were two feet and they were reduced to six inches. At the Architecture and Site Review Committee meeting on July 25th, the designer told the subcommittee that he had created a draft roof plan with a lower pitch, which was never submitted to the planning department, and thought it looked out of place with the rest of the building, and said that it conflicted with commonly accepted design principles. In order to have the roofs, roof slope of the addition match the existing 6 and 12 roof slope, the proposed project includes a flat roof in the middle, and I called it out there, the rectangle in the center, with 6 and 12 roof slopes going to the edges of the roof from the corners of that rectangle. While the roof slopes of the addition do match the roof slope of the existing structure, the result is that the roof design increases the massing of the structure. The architectural historian recommended that the roof store, roof slope of the proposed new addition be revised to less than 6 and 12 because a lower roof slope would lessen the impact of the currently proposed roof massing at the rear addition. This roof plan sketch was provided by the architectural historian as an example of what the modified roof could look like, and the next slide shows what this roof slope would look like on the elevations. These sketches also include the shortened eaves on the garage that were incorporated into the plans yesterday. So these are the alternative, we'll call them the alternative roof plans provided by the architectural historian in elevation view. And I'm going to put these side by side so that you can see these better later in contrast. Staff is requesting direction from planning mission regarding the slope of the roof of the addition to this historic structure. The next several slides show two different roof styles from each elevation. So this is the north elevation, north and south, sorry. And then it's the west. Oops, missed one there. If the planning commission supports the recommendation of the architectural historian, staff will add the following conditions to the conditions of approval. I'm just going to read it here. Prior to additions of building permit, the architectural historian shall sign off on a roof plan that has no flat roof and less than a 6 and 12 slope. I know what happened on the, there were two of these. So, staff recommends the planning commission review the application and approve project 180189 with the revised conditions of approval included with the September 5th errata that removed the language about the variance and included the additional conditions from Public Works. Second, I'm going to, actually, that's the end of the presentation. Can we switch to the other one?
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners have questions about the staff report?
Not at this time.
Would the applicant like to address the commission? Hi, Dennis.
Good evening, honorable commissioners. A couple of issues in this thing, and this has been really a moving target, and this is a historic house. And if you drove by it when this addition's completed, as we have a plan, you will not see any change in the house whatsoever. Roof, Ryan, where we flattened the roof was made intentionally so you cannot see it from the street. The only way you could see it is if you drove down the driveways or stood at the neighbor's houses and see the back of the house. Two things with this. In, in the comments by the historian, but putting a pitch on the back of, of the house, it's a different pitch from the rest of the house, is, is totally unarchitectural. It's something you just don't do in architecture. You don't take two pitches and run them together. And so it would, the house would look misformed if we do it this way. Also, Carolyn Swift agreed, who was set in Arkansas Review Committee, she agreed with us too, that it should be a flat roof with the same pitch in the back. The historian is the only one that believes this. The flat roof you'll never see. You won't know it. You just see the ridge, just like you'd see the ridge line in any house. So we, we feel very strongly that the design of the back of the house, the way the roof is, is the best thing for the structure. The window, the window treatments, the idea is to preserve all of the windows as you see them. In other words, with, they're multi-grids, very expensive windows. If you walk up to the front of the house, you'll see they're, they're impossible to keep those windows. But we can have them rebuilt identical to what's there. And what we're asking, and I'll give you a little education in vinyl, vinyl coating on windows and what it is and what isn't. And we have two of them here, and you can see that a, a normal layman cannot tell the difference between a vinyl trim and a wood trim. So even in historic houses, you cannot tell the difference. The difference is, is the longevity of the window and having to paint everything. So visually, you can't tell the difference. And you can even get it in gloss or semi-gloss to come out identical to what the colors are now. So the intent of the owner is, is to replace all the windows and, and identical to what they are now. There will be nothing on the existing structure that is changed in siding and trim and everything. We'll document every single piece of trim on that, on that house as we, as we do this. There was a third issue. The issue of the garage. We prefer that we be granted the variance. And I'll tell you why. Is, is that, is that only with a variance because historic, the historic, historian wanted us to put the garage back to where the eve of the gable end comes down to the end. Set that back, we moved the garage back, and it pushed us, we, we didn't originally have a variance, but, but she pushed us back. So, so to put a 20-foot garage, which is your code on the inside, and also is, is a reasonable distance because it allows a person to get out of their car and walk around the end of it. 20, 20 feet is an end. So we were, we're asking for a three-foot, a three-foot variance to the rear yard. And that's to keep the architectural character of the side of the house. Now, the alternative is, is to go to a shorter garage, as discussed with, what staff has discussed with you, where we go to a 17-foot six garage. A 17-foot six garage is a difficult, difficult size because you, you can get out of your car, the width is fine, it's the fact that you won't be able to walk around the end of it. It'll be that short. That, that difference of, of two feet makes a big difference in the length of garage. And I think your code is correct. 20 feet is a good length to have, have a garage. So what we prefer with this is, we would like to, to keep the, the rough line as we have proposed it, number one. Number two is, is we would like to have a variance to the rear yard setback just for the garage of the three feet. We will accept, if you decide to give, give us the 17-foot with no variance, we will accept that too. But we, we've gone out of our way in these plans and with the help of staff to, to, to keep the historic character of this house. It's, it's the owner's intention, they're going to move in themselves into this house. They have a renter there now. They actually have owned the house for a number of years. They did a land division in the back where they separated the lot. They own it, they're going to move in themselves, and they would like to have attached garage so, in, in their elder years now, that they can easily go to the garage from their, from their house.
Can I add something?
Certainly.
I've been living in, this would be my third home in a while. I don't move that much. We are both in the 70s. That's my wife. We both own the house. And we're going to stay in this house for, for the rest of our life, whatever that might be. I don't know if it's going to be five years, 10 years, 20, I don't have no idea. But like I said, we're already in the 70s. We have been living in houses where the garage's attached to the kitchen, you get out from the house, you're in the kitchen. If it's raining, if it's dark, if there's a prowler, whatever, at least you're a little safer rather than have a garage not attached to the house. We understand in the olden days, people used to do, you know, used to be, for the horse and buggy, will be away from the house, and then they changed it to be separate. But in the modern time, unfortunately, people like to have the house attached to, the garage attached to the house. So that's a big plus for us. I've done a lot of searching windows, and everybody that's in the window business, they discourage me highly to get a wood window. In the olden days, this clad finish didn't exist. Now, we're going to make it look exactly the same, with the same grid pattern, with the same size, except the vine, the finish on the vinyl, or whatever you want to call it, it lasts, it doesn't need maintenance, because otherwise you got to paint it, and that doesn't ensure that the window doesn't decay after a while. The existing window, they're great, they look great, they do a great job to the house. However, they have termites issues, they don't open, they rattle when it's, when it's, when it's windy. I got to live there. I don't want to get any money on the house. So I like to put new windows. Yes, it would be great if I can leave the same window if it wasn't for all those issues. And I don't want to go paint every, I'm not going to paint every two or three years. So as you can see, if you want to check those two windows, I'll tell you which one is clad and which one it isn't. They both look the same. The technology's changing. We are, you know, sure, the house, we want to leave it the same. We so far haven't done, haven't touched one single thing of the exterior. And we like to live in the house and we like to enjoy the, the neighborhood and, you know. So we appreciate your, your time and whatever you're going to. The other thing is, if we can go three feet setback, can we compromise in something in the middle? Because I want to be able to go in the garage and walk around. And I mean, if the cottage park, I want to be able to walk around. The way we have designed, redesigned now, we gained another foot and a half because we shortened the eve, like it was directed by the, what's her name, the Dale, Dale?
Architect.
And she doesn't have to live in the house. She doesn't have to keep the same window. That's great. I'll save a lot of money. But on the other hand, for one thing, Capitol Avenue is not the same road it used to be 100 years ago. There's a lot of cars going there. Double window, that will give you some noise factor versus a single pane window. And also, when it's cold, because sometimes it doesn't get cold even in Capitola, you, you know, it works. So I know the house was built, is a great house, and you guys want to look the same look, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not complaining about that whatsoever. But we got to live today, not 100 years ago. So that's, that's basically what I have to say. I encourage you to look, I mean, if you can, and you can see that, I can even tell, I know which one it is because I, I'm asking.
Just to add one thing about the, the vinyl, it's only on the exterior. They're real wood, wood windows.
They're both wood windows.
They're wood, they're both wood windows, it's just it has a vinyl exterior for, for weatherproofing. And you can order that vinyl almost every, any color today. It's.
We're probably going to use white, but that's what's there right now. We're going to stay with the same color pattern.
Dennis, is, is it possible to clad the existing windows in vinyl? I mean, is, is that an option?
No, you could take it and you'd have to rebuild them, Sam.
You would?
The problem, the problem is if you go up and look at the, the wood is in such bad condition on the grids, that the window glass is starting to, everybody likes the, the window glass because it has the melted look to it. But the, the windows just aren't savable if you look at them. You're very welcome to walk up on that porch and look at them because we, we did everything we could to find a way to save them, and, and they've been painted shut for years.
Oh, they, doesn't work at that part.
They don't function anymore. But that's just part of it. It's just, the grid ones are the most difficult ones. The single hung, yes, you could take them apart and you could put the ballocks back into them and probably make those work, but not, the grid ones are, are the tough ones. I'd like to say one thing about the process is, and I, and I personally have done with a lot, dealt with a lot of historic houses in Capitola, and I'm a big fan of that, believe me, and I do it. One thing that should be in consideration, and this is a perfect example of a house that, this house would look so much better and so much more real if you would let us keep the same design all the way around the house. If you look at what we're doing, we're transcending from a board and batten down below to a siding up above, and all of a sudden, we're coming along a wall, and this is beyond the, the north face. Halfway through the wall, all of a sudden, we're changing to a board and batten all the way up and down on, on the structure. See the one on the upper right? See what happens there? It, it's, it's like a circus tent. It doesn't look right. And so my, my contention is, is that I still, still think, and I'll, Los Gatos does this. They'll let you carry that architectural line, they'll give you a demarcation line there, but allow you to carry the design all the way around. Look how much nicer that house would look if we could take, take that, that same alignment all the way around with the beveled lowers and then the horizontal siding and the bead board siding, more expensive for them, sure, but it, it would, it would really look in place if, if we could do that. And we're fine with, with this being approved, but I'm just saying as a recommendation, look at ways that you can continue architectural style around and still meet Secretary Interior Standards. Thank you for your time.
Dennis? Was there ever any consideration given to eliminating the existing garage and driveway? I mean, part of my concern, I think it's a gorgeous house, I think it's one of the main historic houses in town, but having, you know, a concrete driveway go down both sides of the houses seems to me to, you know, impact how this historical house looks even more than the roof changes that are talking about or, you know, carrying the materials around. So since the new garage and the driveway there, I believe would meet the parking requirements, I was wondering, you know, do we really have to have all of this concrete on both sides of the houses?
Well, one way we can soften that, right now, the driveway on the right is, is a gravel driveway, it's not a concrete driveway. We can keep it like that. We don't have to concrete that. So it makes the approach, the thing that's different about this lot there, it's twice as wide as every lot on the street. It's actually an 80, 80-foot wide, while everything else is in the 40 or 50. So it's a wide life to start with, and I can see the issue of balance. That, that garage there was built there when they did the land division for the two houses behind it. And I don't know what year that was, but.
2000.
2000. So it was, it's not that old, and so.
All sunny, Texas, Texas, Georgia, I'm moving out from.
We could, yeah. This is, but we can keep the right-hand driveway in the gravel, you know, it had, it's always been gravel, we can keep it in that if that, if that's a concern. I think you, you would like to keep the garage.
If, if I may, there, when the application came in, it was originally discussed with the applicant of, would you consider, or with the applicant's representative, would you consider a, you know, double tandem garage in this location so that not to consider a, you know, double tandem garage in this location so that not pave on the left side? And it's my understanding that they didn't want to have to shift around cars as often so it'd be more convenient to have two driveways when we brought it in.
So there is one driveway, and my wife has to get out, and she's in the garage. I've got to move the house, that my car into the street, which takes another parking space. Once I'm over there, am I going to move? Probably not. Probably going to stay on the street. And then, so she's got to wait for me to get out, find parking, if I find parking on the street, which is not that simple to find parking on the street. Capitol Avenue, it's, there is no parking. So yes, give a little more parking, but also give me the storage. And if I'm in the house and my wife comes, I have to move, and she, or the other, vice versa. That's why the two driveway. And like Dennis has mentioned, that's a double lot, basically.
Right. So your plan is to keep the right-hand driveway, I was thinking, in gravel?
Yes. But I could either leave gravel or put pavers, which, you know, a lot of people seem to like the pavers right there. From the standpoint of a drainage, it's a better way to do it. So whatever you guys decide on that aspect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. The flat roof, I noticed on the plans, there's a pull-down staircase that, does that go to the flat roof?
No, that goes up in the attic area. We need to have, by code, we have to have attic, there's an attic area, where the pitch comes up.
Okay.
The roof is flat there, you can't go out the top.
So there's no access to the flat roof?
No, that's just up to get in the attic to...
Attic access.
Attic access.
Yeah.
I was under the impression that the variance request had been withdrawn.
I was too.
No, our first choice would be the variance, but we'll accept it the other way too. So...
But I would go to a huge extent to put a driveway and put a garage, and have basically a garage which undersized it. I don't have a huge car, but my car barely makes it, and I'll have two feet in front, but nothing in the back. So from that point of view, it would be nice to have another foot, foot and a half into that depth of the garage. But if that's not impossible, well, we'll have to leave with that.
Maybe you should address then why there are special circumstances here that were just...
Well, I'll tell you what the special circumstances are, is that originally, we had it so there was no variance required, and we had a full twenty-foot, by code, garage. The historian, can we see the gable end shot right there, Matt, please? Okay. See the gable, see the gable, the eve line coming down right there? She did not want us to cut any of that eve off of there, and so she had us move the garage back, so you kept the full length of that eve all the way down that matched the other side. Because we were originally three feet forward on this, and we moved it back for the eve cut. So that was historical consideration, and so it put us in a position where we had to go for a variance to be a wonderful-sized garage.
I think it was their suggestion to move the garage back, it was not our suggestion. And we brought that out.
Please speak at the microphone.
That was the suggestion of the historian architect to move the garage back three feet. It was not our intention to move it back. It was under her direction, we said, let's move it back. And at the time of the meeting, I did bring it up, it's going to be past the setback. There were no, nobody said anything against it. But I see the house next door to mine, the blue house, where there is a, what do you call it, what is it?
A Genusov.
The house is all over the place. It's got an upstairs. That's an historic house, isn't it?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Chalene Trakers, I don't believe was...
But even so, even setback, anyway, like, I'm not going to go there.
So our first, and maybe I may have confused staff in this thing, but our first intention is, is that what works best for us to give us a variance for this. The second best was, give us a variance of even one foot or a foot, one foot six instead of three feet. That would give us a full-size garage. We can make that work. What we did, we shortened eve in the front on the gable end of the garage. So we can, if you gave us a foot and a half easement in the back, we can make this full-size garage work for him. The third choice is, is what I gave staff as an alternative, and that is that we have a garage that's eighteen-six to the outside, which would make it seventeen-eight to the inside, fairly short. So, okay?
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you. I guess I wanted to ask staff how it came about that we received this errata indicating that the variance request had been withdrawn and noticed that way?
It was noticed with a variance originally. We did receive an email. I received a phone call from Dennis on Tuesday, I want to say, and he brought up the idea of modifying the plans. And with the new plans coming in, it was my understanding, and it may have been a misinterpretation, but with updated plans, I said, you can submit them if you'd like. It was not explained that this was an alternative. To me, it was the modified plans, and therefore, where the plans did not include a variance, we put out the errata stating that the variance was removed. So it was definitely a misunderstanding.
But just to be clear, modified plans were submitted to you?
They were submitted to us, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the commission on this item?
Sure.
Yes.
My first time, so, my name's Jim Black, and I'm a neighbor on the same street. Thank you guys for your time. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of this project, and I'm really, very proud of the work that Dennis has done, and the owners, to make this be as accommodating as possible to the city. And I just want to say, as a neighbor, I think these are all good suggestions that are all very positive for the neighborhood, keeping the historical part in mind with the decisions you guys make. So that's all I had to say.
Right.
Do I need to sign in here?
Thank you, Jim. Well, if you want your name for the record, just so that we have it accurately, use your chance, sign in. Jim, could you identify, I mean, are you a neighbor to the side, or you're a neighbor in the back?
I'm a neighbor to the side on Capitol Avenue.
On Capitol Avenue, okay.
So I'm a couple houses down.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And Jim, I think you dropped something out of your pocket when you stood up. You might want to grab it.
Thanks.
Any other members of the public wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone up front. I'll bring it back to commissioners for discussion and action.
Can I bring something else that I haven't mentioned?
Okay, I'll reopen it then, since nobody else spoke up here, so I'll give you three minutes.
Three, I shall take a minute. One of the big reasons why we're moving is because my daughter lives close by. That's probably the biggest reason why we're moving. Otherwise, below where we are, we like Capitola, of course, but that's the big reason why we're moving, because she's just around the corner.
Yes, okay, yeah, you're welcome. So...
Special circumstance.
Yes, there you go, Ed, there's your special circumstances, right? So is there a commissioner that would like to volunteer to start off our discussions? Anyone? TJ?
All right. You know, I love these historical homes, so, you know, I think this is an opportunity for the city and the homeowner to work together and compromise, because, you know, I'm not a fan of the Secretary of Interior standards, and it's been very vocal. In fact, I tried stopping it during our zoning update, but we didn't get there. And I like the way Los Gatos does it, and Carmel does the same thing, because they actually have a group that takes these homes and looks at them as individuals. And Secretary of Interior standards, while it's a process that we have to go the way our board set up, I guess, I think it doesn't fit every home that we are trying, or we look at in Capitola, and we're trying to force a round peg in a square hole here. This home is a great example of how you're keeping really the look of the historical home all the way through the whole process. Vinyl windows are appropriate, not only because they're going to last in our neighborhood. In fact, most of the homes I see being built on Depot Hill now, and the ones that had to remodel, the nice wood sash, they're going to vinyl clad because they last longer. I think from a perspective of energy and just general care, I think it's a good move. No one is going to notice driving by on Capitol Avenue, the vinyl versus the wood. So I don't have an issue. I think it should be something that works for the homeowner and is best for the house. The roof line, I am not a fan of changing the roof line to four-on-twelve. I have an issue about roof lines. In fact, go look at my roof sometime. There's a lot of roof line there. It makes my house look massive, but to me, what draws an attention and makes the house look that way is the roof line. It has a nice look to it. So I'd hate to see us change to anything less than the six-on-twelve and keep the original pitch on the roof. I don't have a problem with the variance. I understand what Leslie Dill was trying to do by keeping that eve, moving the garage back. There's plenty of space there. This is a historical. We have obviously an opportunity and a reason to do that, because we want to preserve the look of the historical home. So it's not like we're given a special condition. I'm a garage person. I wish my garage was bigger, and it's, trust me, much larger than yours. So I think it's appropriate to allow the homeowner to have a twenty-foot garage. It's our code, it's what we need to, I think, work with individual. And if that means moving into the setback area, then I think that's appropriate. Mr. Tringali, I don't know if you sell cars. I hope not, because you do a good job of selling your position, and so I appreciate your insight. But I think this is an opportunity for us to work with Mr. Tringali's to keep a historical home, but yet add the efficiencies of some new nicer windows that's still going to give the same look, and give them a working garage to make it usable and get it out of their home. So for me, I like what's been presented, and I would be in favor of the variance.
Just to clarify, TJ, I wonder, concerning the roof line, were you saying that you're in favor of the staff recommendation that it should be revised to be less than six-twelve?
No, I'm not. I'm in favor of the architect's design.
The original, the architectural design. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? The issue of the siding on the exterior of the building, not having the board and batten...
Yeah, thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
...all the way around, were you suggesting that the same type of siding should be continued all the way around?
Yes. I don't like this hyphenated thing that the Secretary of Interior standards, to make it stand out and be different. For me, if it was my home, I would ask the same thing, that they could keep the siding and make it look like, so the portion, the addition of the garage doesn't stand out as something different. So I would be in favor of also allowing the same siding. Thank you, thank you for asking that.
Next, who wants to go next? Linda?
You want me to go?
I would, I would.
Could we have you go?
Okay, well, for me, there's like five issues, and I'll just sort of go through them. I have a bit of difficulty with the variance because I really can't see, you know, as the applicant said, this is a double lot, it's flat, it's bigger than most of the lots that we have in town. So somebody would have to work hard to convince me to support the variance. I don't have any difficulty with the vinyl clad windows. I agree, I think technology has changed a lot, and for the average person, they can't tell the difference when they're standing on the sidewalk looking at a house, whether they're vinyl clad wood windows, or if they're just plain wood windows. So I could go along with vinyl clad wood windows. I actually think in this particular case that I agree with Commissioner Welsh. This is a house that you are going to see, you know, the various sides of it. And if we could do something, as Mr. Norton suggested, by putting something that delineated what the old part was and what the new part was, then having the same siding continue all the way around would work for me. I can even go along with having the six-and-twelve roof. I think it's a minor detail and really looks better in sort of the overall design of the house. I would like to see the one driveway remain gravel, and I would even love to see the new driveway, you know, be designed so it can be as, you know, small as it can, you know, something to, you know, soften it up a bit, because I do think we have a lot of sort of unlandscape surfaces going down either side of the house. So that's sort of where I am.
On the variance?
Variance, I'm a no on the variance.
Can I ask a question, a clarification then? If no on the variance, are you in favor of allowing them to cut into the eve and have a twenty-foot garage? That was the original design, and I could do that. I'm open for not doing the variance if we allow them to cut into the eve and still keep a twenty-foot garage. And quite frankly, being on that southern side, I don't even know that you're going to notice unless you walk up there either way, so...
Well, I think cutting into the eve three feet might be a little much, but maybe, you know, cutting into the eve a foot and a half, or two feet, you might be able to convince me of that.
It's my turn? It's my turn, okay. I'm going to come down kind of in between the two folks. When it comes to the windows, it's not the trim, it's the glass. It's the glass that looks old, that you can see looks old. In this particular case, the glass is so small in the gridded area, when I went by today, I wasn't really seeing old glass in the gridded area, but the rest of it, it does kind of look melted. And if there was some way to keep that look in the windows, I'd be fine with vinyl, the vinyl clad. My difficulty with the variance doesn't have as much to do with the garage as it has to do with giving up a parking place in that corridor. When I went over today, there was one parking place within blocks, and I parked in it so that I could sit there and look and compare the drawing to see what the windows look like. And as soon as I pulled out of it, somebody pulled into it. And I wish there was a way to get the driveway and the garage that they want without giving up that parking place. I struggle with that. I too have always had a problem with the hyphenation. It's never made sense to me. If there was some way to delineate it without changing the siding, and I've seen in some houses, I think there's one over on Central as a matter of fact, that the siding didn't really change, they did a double band, and they delineated it that way, so you could tell what was new and what wasn't. If I weren't concerned about the parking, I don't have a problem seeing the preservation of the eve line on that side, because you can see it when you're coming down Capitol Avenue that direction. There's enough distance between the houses that that side is pretty visible. And if they brought the garage forward, they'd be compliant, but because it's a historic structure, they're being asked to put the garage back. So not granting the variance because of parking makes sense to me, but from a historic perspective, I could live with the garage being moved backward and that being the justification for the variance, that we're saving, we're preserving the historic house. Would like to see a condition that the flat roof can never be used as a rooftop deck or a garden. When we approve designs on houses, the person who's living in the house today matters, they matter a lot, but we also have to look forward and say, what's the use going to be if that property sells and it's a whole new group of people coming in? So I'd like to see a condition on the flat roof and a condition that the existing garage can't be turned into an ADU, which I think is okay because of the size of the lot would prohibit that anyway. But if it would be appropriate, I'd like to just see that additional condition on use.
Is that possible?
You know, they would have to come in for an application for an ADU, because they're allowed...
allowed to have an ADU on that property because it's over 5,000 square feet, I believe.
That would conflict with the state law.
Yeah, it would conflict with the state law.
So can I address the parking? I had the same concern that you had about the parking and losing the parking space in front. So I actually went and looked and they have an eighty-foot lot, wide lot. And so they would actually be able to have a driveway cut in there that is no greater than forty percent of the width of the lot there. But they, they could have the, this, the width that they have because it's 26 feet with the two of them added on.
So they're just not together, but they're split and that still would comply?
So they're split, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
That was a confusing answer, but sorry, I'm conflicted.
And I don't think that they can do a, a double pane window with old glass.
No, they can't. They can't. The only way would be to preserve the, the existing glass in that lower half, which doesn't make a lot of sense if you're replacing it up above.
Right. Yeah. Ed?
Let me know if I miss anything. I need to check last time.
Okay.
I got it right here.
The window is no issue. I agree with everyone on that. The roof line, I agree with the architect. That it would look better with this deeper roof, so no issue on that. The siding change, Commissioner Welsh and I have been lockstep on this issue of the differentiation being more trouble than it's worth in many cases. And certainly that extreme differentiation is not necessary. You can do something much more subtle than that so that someone who really wants to know and look closely can understand that, that section's different from the other section. So this is another example, or maybe the best example we've had of where our historic ordinance kind of causes more trouble than it solves. I mean, I, you know, we're all in fatal, ever since the McHugh Bianca Building was torn down and the Cooper House were torn down right away, we've all, you know, we're not going back to that era. But we can go overboard also. And I don't, I don't want to turn our planning process over to historical technicians. And we've got obviously an applicant here and an architect who are doing a great job to preserve an important building in our community. And I think they're doing, doing it in a good faith. And we don't need to get bogged down in some of the technicalities that some of the professionals seem to be able to find somewhere in the regulations. So with that said, the solution to the garage, to me, is to shorten the eve and not to grant a variance. I think that's a better solution. Because I don't really think we're giving up that much in terms of preservation of a great historical asset in our community. And I, I like to hold the line on variances. So that's, did I miss anything?
So would you propose shortening it how much?
Well, we can discuss that, whether it's the full three feet or two feet. I'm seeing two feet in the audience there.
Two feet?
Two feet will work because we can, even the front, we can, we just move the floor.
Yeah. So I think that's a better solution.
Would that still be a, a one-foot variance then?
My understanding is you're pushing it forward two feet?
If we're going to, if we get the other variance, we need to push it forward three feet, but it only requires to cut two feet off of that eve.
Oh, it's, okay, I understand.
So no variance in a two?
No, no variance in a two-foot.
Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Can, can we ask the applicant if they're willing to leave the other driveway direct gravel? Want to make it that on the record?
Or just impervious surface?
Well.
You want it gravel?
I think I want it gravel.
I'm sorry.
The other driveway, you agreed to leave the right-hand side driveway gravel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Use that product to work.
Yeah. Please speak at the microphone.
It's the, it's, the, it's, it's a gravel base. It's a, on a new gravel.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
Not hardscape, yeah.
Okay, yeah. It's like the old driveways used to be.
Can we do just the approach because probably I wouldn't have parked in the garage. I'm just going to park away from the street. Can we put just portion of, I'll probably have parked inside the garage. I don't care to park over there. I use for storage or whatever. Can I have just the, the first fifteen feet with some kind of paper or whatever? Leave the rest of, that's pretty long driveway. How long do you think the driveway is?
Well, for me, the whole thing needs to be the same material. I think it would look really odd to have a fifteen or twenty-foot concrete area in there. So, you know, you can talk to the other commissioners, but for me, I would like to see it's a sort of the gravel impervious surface.
What happened when you spin the wheels in this product, you will get them all over the street and?
No, not necessarily. They do, they do a oil base on it, so it holds down pretty good. People still put in gravel driveways and they're, they're good bases. They stay in place. They're not, they don't like the old driveways. They're not base rock.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is the, is the current approach, Dennis, is the current approach to that driveway, is it concrete at the street?
No, yeah, just in the curb and sidewalk.
In the curb and sidewalk. Okay, because that has to be for ADA stuff.
Yeah, once you get past the curb and sidewalk, then.
Then it's?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's, it's almost when it's done, it's, it's, it's a permeable surface, but it's, it's, you can walk on it. It doesn't kick gravel up. It's, it's like a hard pack. People do it in walkways and stuff like that too, so.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Well, bringing it back to, to, I guess it's my turn to weigh in on this. And I think I feel like most of the other commissioners, I'm fine with the vinyl clad windows. You know, you know, things have a useful life and they need to be replaced. Even if we required them to keep the old windows, at some point, they're going to deteriorate. And they're not the most efficient. I mean, if you think of energy efficiency, it, it is better, I think, to replace the windows. They have the same look as the original windows. Certain things, I think, do have to be improved over time, even in historical structures. And because the important thing is, you know, people are living in them. And we need to maintain a comfortable living environment. I'm fine with the original proposed roof line, as had the other commissioners were. I think it's, won't be visible. And to me, I think it is a better architectural look to it. On the siding, yes, as the other commissioners agree, it should be the same siding. I would like to see some sort of, some delineation between what was the, the original structure and what is now the new structure. And I'll leave it up to the applicant to provide that. Now, on, on the variance, yeah, I have a, one on a, just a process basis because we have this errata which indicated that the variance request was being removed. And I would have a hard time now in shifting gears because that's the way it's been noticed from any of the neighbors. And if we now have kind of a tension between the pure historical architectural recommendations and imposing into the setback into, you know, the surrounding neighbors behind it, I think I'd rather sacrifice, as Ed proposed, the, the cutting into the eve, pulling the garage up, that necessary three feet, so we don't have the need for the variance. And I think.
I think the planning director wants to correct your end.
Yes.
So the errata that went out was sent to the planning commission and then placed at the back table. There was no additional notice that went to neighbors regarding the change. So they, the, the neighbors and all the public noticing that took place included a variance. I just want to point a, point of clarification.
So it was not posted on the website at all?
No, it was not.
Only sent through emails?
Just sent to the planning commission through emails and placed at the table.
And it was sent today, right? Do we get it today or yesterday?
Yesterday, yesterday.
Yesterday afternoon, late yesterday.
I saw it this morning, so.
Well, that raises other questions for me, but, but we'll, we'll, we'll leave that for another time. But with that, I, I still think that, you know, I mean, I, I would, even if the request for the variance stood, have a, would have a hard time since, as staff recognize, it is an additional garage, okay? And which may take it out of, you know, the need for the special circumstances on a historical structure. But I think that that's what I would, I mean, I, I really like Ed's approach to dealing with that issue. And so with that, I think, are we ready to propose the motion? I also would support, you know, keeping the driveway, the old driveway in a gravel.
Okay, so if we're going to make a motion, somebody needs to add a couple conditions when they make the motion.
Why don't you make it?
Are you ready? I make a motion to approve the application with adding condition in there that the siding on the house can all remain the same going around as long as on the plans that come in for the building permit, the designer gets approval of some device to indicate the difference where the old building started, where the old building ended and the new part started. And staff can approve that change. I'd like to add a condition in there that the windows will be made to match the design of the original windows in the house, but they can be a vinyl clad wood window. That the original driveway on the right-hand side of the property remain in the gravel impervious type surface. That the roof on the garage can be at a six and twelve pitch. And that the garage itself will be redesigned to relocate it two feet forward, cutting into the eve, two feet, to eliminate the need for a variance.
You meant the roof on the house, didn't you?
Roof on the house.
So we'll move forward three feet, but it was only going to cut two feet of eve.
Only going to cut into the eve, two feet.
Correct.
So whatever that gets them at the garage is nineteen feet, whatever, they can cut into it, two feet. And is there anything else?
I think that's good.
Anything else staff needs?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations.
Lifted but reasonable.
With that, that'll bring us to the director's report.
I have a couple of things to discuss tonight, to bring up. And first, I'll just address the errata that was sent out during that application. It should have been additional materials. And in the future, it will be additional materials. An errata typically goes out when there's a mistake made within the staff report by staff, so we'll fix that in the future.
But just an addendum.
It's an addendum, yeah.
Errata was an errata.
Exactly. But we're, we're learning, so that, that won't.
Since you're talking about that, can I make one comment also? In the staff report, a couple of places it said that, that things were denied. Things can't really be denied until they come to the planning commission. Am I wrong in that?
No, you're absolutely right in that. And I'll, I'll go back and look at the staff report and go through it with staff and make sure that we don't make that mistake. And it was just on that application that you bring, that was that app?
I'm not sure which application it was, but it was in the staff report and I noted it in a couple of places.
Okay. Sometimes we'll add that to the conditions, so they're in line with the recommendation. But then if the, if the decision is different, we go back and we change the conditions. So, but I'll take a look at that. Also, an update on 4690 Capitola Road. That, that home is, they continue to work on the home and it's in line with the agreements that have been put in place. So, and recently, the city received a payment of $45,000 to cover ten-plus years of staff time working on that and attorney fees. So, but they're, they continue to proceed. There's, they're checking in next week on the project. So at the next planning commission, I'll provide you with the latest update. Robin Woodman joined us as the new building official, so that's great news.
That's shared with Scotts Valley?
Shared with Scotts Valley. And so she started last week within our department. This week, she's with Scotts Valley. And tomorrow, we're setting up what her schedule will look like now that she understands kind of the dynamics of both locations. We just closed a position for a, a building tech that's also going to be helping in the building department and do a lot of the processing that occurs and take some of that strain off of our inspector and building official. And I also wanted to bring to your attention that next week, we're going to present for the first time to the city council, the idea of the bike share program. As you've seen probably the red bikes around town that are coming in from Santa Cruz, their, their system was adopted, I think, in May of this year. And it's been a great success there. And they're going to be taking on, that right now, they have 250 bikes and they're, with the university is now going to join into their program. They'll be up to 500 bikes is my understanding is what they're looking at. So we're going to our, to the city council to discuss whether or not we should start public outreach to see if the citizens are interested in having a bike share here in Capitola. We'll go to the Commission on the Environment and the Parking and Circulation Committees and provide them with an overview of the concept. And then the, bring it back to city council for direction. So we're just starting to work on that and it takes some time to get one of those in place. But just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you have any thoughts on that, feel free to reach out and share. And that concludes the director's report.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have any information about what's happening with the Sears site, with Sears closing the store and that application going forward on appeal to the city council?
So the appeal is set for October 25th. We received a letter from their, or an email from their attorney and a phone call asking to be continued to the November, pushed out. They first asked for January and then they pulled back to November. Staff, we've been trying to communicate with them of what changes they would like to their plans. And there, it's been crickets. I haven't heard anything. So at this point, we're preparing to have the city council make the decision of whether or not to continue at the October 25th hearing. So, but we'll, we'll be bringing forth, planning to bring forth the appeal and have it heard if not that evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any commission communications?
So I wanted to bring up the, the issue. Maybe this may have been brought up before, I'm not sure, but of the human sign holders showing up on weekends in the village and in the city with either, sometimes they call them spinners.
Yeah.
And sometimes, this last Labor Day weekend, we had a liquidation sale someplace on 41st. And they had two people stationed in town. And they know that the planning, I guess, department people are not working on those days. I think that, I looked at our sign ordinance. And although it's not in black and white, it seems pretty clear that they ought to get a permit. And it's not fair to other businesses if, who have to go through the sign applications and comply with all the rules if somebody can just show up with someone in the middle of the street all day with a commercial sign. So I contacted the police department. I don't know what they did with the complaint, but I think there needs to be some kind of process to have the police let those people know right away that they're, they have them permit to do that.
So my understanding is when it's a person holding a sign, it's, it's freedom of speech and they can be out there with a sign. I also saw a hot air balloon above a mattress company. And we followed up with a, a court, code enforcement letter of, of warning after the weekend. But if they are standing out there with a sign and they're holding it, my, and I'll.
If it's purely commercial.
Yeah, commercial speech.
I think there's, I think.
They're protected. But I will check back in with our city attorney and make sure there's been no new.
I'd like to dig a little deeper into that because that could really end up being, I mean, it kind of completely overwhelm all our, you know, sign rules in the village with just people all over the place with signs.
Yeah, maybe the city attorney could provide us because I think there are a couple of recent court cases about it.
Yeah.
And I do agree, I think the court said as long as the person continues to move, they can't stand, that's why you see them sort of dancing around and doing that thing, as long as they're moving, it's a free speech.
They're not assigned then.
They're not assigned.
And you're now seeing like the LED t-shirts that, I'm not sure if you've seen these, but at festivals, you'll see LED t-shirts that are advertising as well, so it's like an electronic sign that you.
I'd like to find a way around that because it's, you know, in our village, I think it's a big thing and maybe we could dig into that a little bit.
Right. Yeah, and I concur with that, you know, with the people held signs, but I also want to add to that, I've also noticed there've been signs in the medians. One that advertises church at the beach, they tend to go up on bay and so, and I don't know if, it didn't appear to me that they've gotten a permit, of course, and also, we all have all the real estate signs, which.
If you read our ordinance, there's, yeah, there's this exception for the real estate sign.
Right, yeah. But I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't aware there's an exception for church on the beach. And the, and I recently noticed there's a very large sign at the corner of Monterey and Park Avenue for the county fair. I imagine it's on RTC property, but I still, even if it's private or public property, some like they would have to get a permit and I don't know if they did have a permit for such a large freestanding sign. And if, and if they don't have a permit, I think it should be taken down or, you know, they should be contacted. And not just, nothing about the fair, I love the fair, I go every year, I spend a lot of money there, I wish them the best, but I think that's an inappropriate place and the size of the sign. So any other commissioners have comments about signs and I did?
In response to that, we'd welcome any time that you see a sign that you'd like to have removed, to send us an email and let us know where the sign is and we can reach out.
Yeah, thank you, Katie.
And then for the public, there's, you can always fill out a code enforcement complaint and submit it to the front desk at City Hall or mail it into 420 Capitola Avenue and we'll address any code enforcement issues.
Okay. And could the public do that by email as well to?
They can, it's online, the forms, they can fill it out and email it in to us as well.
Since we're talking about signs, do you have any update on when the signs on the salon at the end of the esplanade is going to be changed? We approved that.
They, they were having timing issues with the, with whoever was developing the signs. And Matt, do you know the date that that's expected to go in the soaps?
End of September.
End of September.
They've been ordered and they're in production now and then he's going to have to come and get a building permit to put them up, so probably end of September.
Thanks.
And Leslie, I did want to follow up and I appreciate, Katie, you're talking about the erratas and the addendums, but it would, I mean, to me, it seems like that those should at least be posted on the website so that members of the public are equally aware that new submissions and in some cases, changes to plans have come in. And I know, I mean, on the notice cards, the green cards that go out, assuming it directs them to the website if they wanted to get more information or see and follow what's going on. So I just wanted to make that request as well. Any other commission comments with that? I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually went to court on it.